Good evening, everybody. It is Monday, December 2nd, 2024 at 6:01 PM. I'll call to order the Free Town Board of Select meeting. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on our YouTube page. Tonight's meeting is going to be on Zoom as well, so I'm going to read the Governor's Order related to Zoom meetings. So this meeting will be available for in-person attendance and on Zoom on March 29th, 2023. Governor Healey signed into law Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to open meeting law to March 31st, 2025. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location and provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. This meeting of the Free Town Board of Select meeting will be conducted in person as well as via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public body can be found on the town Free Town's website, freetownma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public body who wish to listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner: downloading Zoom and entering the meeting ID below, calling the number listed below and entering the meeting ID listed below, or by going to the link and entering the meeting ID listed below. Although in-person attendance is available for this meeting, every effort we made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website and YouTube channel an audio or video recording or transcript. This other or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Okay? That's the first bit of reading I have to do, and now I'm going to read the public notice to open the hearing. November 21st, 2024. Public Notice, Town of Free Town. The Free Town Board of Selectment in conjunction with the Board of Assessors will conduct a public hearing relative to selections of a residential factor that will determine the percentage of tax burden to be borne by each class of property for fiscal year 2025. The hearing will be conducted at the Police Station Community Room, 15 Memorial Drive, East Free Town, Massachusetts, 02717, on Monday, December 2nd, 2024, 6:00 PM. This meeting will also be available virtually. Meeting information listed below. Meeting information and further agenda information will be posted on or before the close of business on November 24th, 2024. Free Town Board of Select meeting. Trevor Matthews, Jared Zager, and Carlos Lopes. So with that, the public hearing is open. Do you guys have to call?
Yeah, should we call back or erase this?
We will resume our meeting and discuss itself during six o'clock tonight.
Okay.
All right.
Do we have to roll call that? Because we're on Zoom.
Um, sure, yeah. Zoom, okay, Jeff?
Yes.
Oh, yes, all right.
Thanks for reminding me, because I totally forgot. Luckily, no votes yet. All right, so do we have the updated?
And then just handed to.
Did she hand it to me? I wasn't paying attention, sorry. I was too busy trying to read.
Two, eight and a half by eleven.
It is more or less the same as what you would have gotten over the weekend. It has fewer lines, so the text is bigger.
Okay, perfect.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, I was squinting pretty hard for that.
Now, Mike, is it less lines? That's what the governor or the government gave us to choose from?
Oh, no, the government would have given us more lines, far more lines. You could, you could really get one of these sheets that has probably close to a thousand lines.
No, thanks. So the current, if we did nothing, right? The current one we're at, is that 1.57?
Uh, so no, the, no, that's okay. The 1.57, if you go down to the line, the next highlighted line below that, that's the 1.625.
Yep.
That is the shift that we adopted last year.
Okay.
So what the other highlights are, 1.625 is the current shift. The 1.57, that represents the shift that would produce the same residential tax rate that we have this year, the 1043. The line, the third highlighted line down, which is 1.645, that produces as close to the same commercial tax rate as you could get. Right now, we're at 1030, excuse me, 2032, and that's 2035. And then the one difference between the sheet you got over the weekend and the one that you have copied now is there's a fourth highlighted line, 1.695. That's a result of a discussion we had during the assessors meeting this afternoon.
Okay.
The top three are, like I said, the ones you get over the weekend. So 1.625 is the current shift. 1.57 produces the same residential tax rate. 1.645 produces the same commercial tax rate. And then you have the sheet that has the benchmarks or highlights or whatever on it, the bullet points. And that has a few extra ones this year because there are some skews in this table that don't normally happen in the chart with all the different options. So just to run down the bullet points quickly, the top few are the same as they've been every year. 2001 was when Stop &amp; Shop's TIF began. 2004 was when Stop &amp; Shop began operating. 2015, Amazon's TIF was approved. I'll skip over a couple of lines because we won't quite need those. So Fiscal '24, the year that ended for us on June 30th, that was the last year that Stop &amp; Shop had a TIF. Stop &amp; Shop was on what we call an old TIF, which meant that for the duration of their TIF agreement, their personal property was completely and totally exempt. It didn't matter what their real estate percentage was. When their TIF ends, their personal property becomes taxable. That's talked about in some of the paragraphs at the bottom. You compare that with Amazon is on what's called a new TIF. The personal property matches the real estate. So when the real estate's at 50%, the personal property is at 50%. So with Stop &amp; Shop, at first, we were describing as like a little bit of a windfall because they were suddenly paying taxes this year on a bunch of stuff they weren't paying taxes on before. During our meeting this afternoon, one of our members isn't here, but she had mentioned that it shouldn't be looked at as much as a windfall as Stop &amp; Shop didn't have to pay those taxes for 20 years, and now they're simply paying what they were supposed to be paying more or less all along.
Yeah.
So in 2025, fiscal year '25, aside from the fact that Stop &amp; Shop is off their TIF entirely now, Amazon's TIF also went from 75% down to 50%. So they are paying at a higher rate than they have been the last few years. And it does mention this is Stop &amp; Shop's first year for personal property, but this is also the first year that folks are going to begin paying toward the Bristol Plymouth School construction project. So there's a little bit of an overlap. I think we're in the last year paying for the police station or second to last year. It's near, it's.
Twenty-nine will be the last year.
Is it twenty? Okay, I thought it was a little bit earlier.
Five hundred thousand a year.
So there's a little bit of an overlap where the police sta-, it might have been the school I was thinking of. The police station hasn't fallen off yet. One or two of our own school construction projects have fallen off, but we're picking up the Bristol Plymouth project. So where we saved from our own school, VP's taking. But in a couple of years, the police station will fall off. There'll be some savings there. When we get to the paragraphs that are at the bottom of the sheet, there's just some calculations. So for example, Stop &amp; Shop, their real estate value increased by about $2.4 million. That's a combination of them losing the last 1% of their TIF and also just general market changes because the market is still going up. But their personal property represented growth of $15.1 million because that's all stuff we were never getting before. Amazon had a change again from 25, from 75% to 50%. So the change there, market value, plus what we're picking up from the TIF rate change was just about a $9.7 million increase. Then we have a few other large businesses like Copart and Algonquin Gas that has the large gas transmission lines. But the huge growth with Stop &amp; Shop and with Amazon, that's why we were saying the chart is a little bit skewed. When it tells you what the average commercial bill might increase, you have to keep in mind that those larger businesses are pulling that higher. So, you know, we ran a few numbers during our meeting this afternoon just to try and see, like, we used Grandpa's Place in Assonnee and Profile Tavern in East Free Town as our examples. Grandpa, I don't, I didn't bring that sheet with me, but Grandpa's, the bill was going to go up something like maybe $600 or $700, and that was combined real estate and personal property. Profile Tavern was going to go up around $1,500 or $1,800. That was combined real estate, personal property, and they had taken out a permit for something during the year, so there was some added growth. Compare that with Stop &amp; Shop that's in the tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars of what's going to go up. Those larger businesses are pulling that average higher. The typical small business in town is going to see an increase, but they're not going to see, I mean, there are lines on this chart where it says the average bill could go up $2,000. The smaller businesses are not going to see the $2,000 increase. That's all those many, many, many smaller increases being sucked higher by massive increases of larger businesses. So the assessors wanted to point that out to, to make it not look quite as shocking. Because it's shocking when you see the large.
Thank you.
Sure.
That's why we discussed that bottom grade area, that 1.6950 shift.
Yep, so that, that bottom, so that one, in this one, the residential go up on average?
No, residential goes down.
No, no, residential goes up.
Tax rate goes down, but the bill goes up.
The bill goes up, yes.
So the average bill goes up around $82 in that scenario for residential. It says that the average commercial bill goes up around $1,700, but that's skewed. So the commercial would be going up, most commercial would be going up in the hundreds or less, not in the thousands. It's just an odd year where that's happening and probably if the Bristol Plymouth project was not there, then at that shift, the residents would probably actually be saving a little bit of money.
Yeah.
When this is calculated and you say that it's going to go up, the average residential in that case, you know, $82?
Right.
Is that based on what's the value that would be causing that to, the value of a home?
Yep, so up at the top of the sheet, right under the heading, there's the two numbers. The average single-family home value, that's still kind of small. The average single value, uh, single-family home value is 531,517.
Oh, there we are. I'm sorry, because my sheet, the way I have.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
What was last year's, Mike? Do you know?
I'm sorry?
What was last year's rate? Do you remember?
It was closer to 500 even, somewhere around there. Commercial was a little bit bigger of a jump. That was in the 600s last year, and it's now the average is a little over 700,000.
So for the past few years, the town has watched the tax rate go down, although everyone's assessments continue to go up because the evaluations of their properties are higher.
Yeah.
We're finally realizing revenue from Stop &amp; Shop and Amazon, and it would be nice for that, for the residents to recognize that and see a modest increase in their tax bill as opposed to continually increasing by greater amounts, you know? So that's why we really discussed this.
1.695?
You know, one of the other things I think we should need to consider is that if the town plans any expansion as far as new buildings and so forth, giving the residential people a break right now is going to help maybe convince them that we do need a building here. We do need a building there. That was one of my thoughts.
Absolutely.
Mike, there's some significance to getting to 1.65 as well?
Um, yes, and Melissa is on the Zoom now and may be able to speak to this a little bit more intelligently than I can, but there was, and this was, Karen had explained this to me long ago, there is some breaking point at 1.65 where if your shift drops below that, the state is hesitant to let you go back above it unless there are certain, basically benchmarks that occur with growth or revenue or whatever. For the last couple of years, we've been at a point where they're allowing us to go as much as 1.75. I don't know exactly what the benchmark is that causes you to get cut off. So there is some benefit to considering going to at least the 1.65 while you can to lock you in at that point. But that's, that's strictly up to you. Just, they were like, there were a number of years where we could not have gone that high because we weren't hitting whatever that benchmark was.
We obviously rely heavy on income from these businesses we've highlighted, right? I guess, what do we see for surrounding areas as far as commercial tax rate? Are we going to scare away some of these big businesses that can obviously Stop &amp; Shops of the world that can go to other areas and get a TIF for, say, the next 20 years? That it really makes it favorable for them to say, see you later, Free Town, and then puts us in a much bigger, you know, we're, I understand what we want to do. I want to help our residents first and foremost, right? We're all residents up here. We're all paying our taxes as well as you. So, you know, I want to help them, but I also don't want to scare away business, right? And I, and I know I can say that that's everyone here, but.
Um, it, it's a little bit hard to compare because some of the towns around us have a single tax rate, which we don't. We split between residence and commercial. If we had a single tax rate, the commercial tax rate would drop considerably. The residential rate would go up because right now we split and the split would go away. Any business that was going to come in that was going to meet standards of development and how many jobs they would create could still get a TIF now. So if another large company came in and said, hey, we want a TIF, we, we want to develop here, they can still do that, and they'd still get the same types of benefits that Stop &amp; Shop and Amazon had gotten before. Some of what may keep larger businesses away is we're starting to run out of larger areas of land that are available to them. As far as the ones that we have now, at least in a couple of cases, it's possible that they're too big to actually leave us because they won't find something comparable somewhere else.
I mean, I think no matter what we do, like, companies are going to play the TIF game, right? They're going to go from community to community, and it's a part of their.
Oh, sure.
It's by design, right? And I, not much we can do about that.
No, I know, yeah, I guess.
I know what you're saying, like, is, are we, are we being like crazy with, you know, increasing? I feel like the range we're given.
Is pretty minimal.
It's pretty tight, right? Like, in the big scheme of things where, I'm sure.
Oh, it's a valid point. And at the end of the day, if I keep using Stop &amp; Shop because they're the biggest one on the list, right? So that's why I'm picking on Stop &amp; Shop. If Stop &amp; Shop walks away, they still owe the value of the property in taxes, right? So a good portion of that's still there. We lose the additional money for the value of all property on the inside, but they still owe the tax burden for the property itself.
Right, so if Stop &amp; Shop were to up and leave next year sometime, if they moved the personal property out, we would lose that. What we also benefit from with Stop &amp; Shop is a condition of their TIF was that they were required to register every vehicle the company owned in this town so that we would get the excise taxes. They're no longer bound by that because the TIF has ended.
Oh.
So.
I didn't even know, I didn't, I didn't hear about that.
Yeah, so we get a few, I want to say a few hundred thousand dollars even in excise taxes from them every year. So if they moved, again, that's something that we would lose because they would register the trucks and corporate cars and whatever else, anywhere else that they went. But the land and the building would still be there. There would still be real estate tax revenue to come from that.
Whereas predominantly, that's where most of the dollars that we generate are coming from.
Right.
So, so the good news is the, the buildings are there. They're established. These businesses that you've highlighted here are there. So a lot of those tax dollars aren't going away. That we really have to worry about taking that huge of a hit overnight, so to speak.
Right.
So, because I, I mean, it's a, it's a concern for me. The real concern is the residents, you know? That's why we're here, is the residents. But, you know, it's just another thing that I think of when I look at this.
No, I mean, it is a fair concern. Somerset went through that when they lost power plants. And in fact, if I remember correctly, in their case, they were not, they were not going to the full levy amount. The power plants were making up a lot of their budget. When the power plants closed, the residents saw huge increases.
Oh, yeah.
Because that wasn't there anymore.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it, any one of those larger businesses, if they left, we'd start to see a ripple effect from that. And, you know, if two of them left, we'd, we'd be tough. But we're fortunate right now that we're in a place that they're here and they don't seem to be going anywhere and, and it's a good thing right now.
Yeah.
But you're right, I mean, it's, it's good to be mindful of the fact of what would happen if they left, what would change.
Thank you.
Mike, do you see, over the summertime, we, we heard about property on Long Pond going up through, through the sky, right? For when we stand, the numbers are correct, just a little early in different ways, right? Do we expect that in Free Town, whether it's Old Bay Shores or Long Pond?
Um, so not in the same way.
Okay.
Generally speaking, residential properties in town, the average increase was around 5% in value. So as Jeff mentioned before, values go up, the tax rates will come down. Waterfront always goes up a little bit more because waterfront sales a little bit more. Where Lakeville saw an issue, if I understood that issue correctly, was we come out with our new values at this time of year. Somehow, Lakeville ended up in their system with new values in the summer. Those new values took the old tax rate. They, they hadn't gone through this process we're going through right now. So they took potential 2025 values at 2024 tax rates, which meant the tax rate didn't come down, and they just saw massive increases all at once. Whether that was computer error or operator error, it was an error. And we will not see that problem here. People's bills will go up, but they will go up like they would normally expect them to. They would, they will not. I recall, we got, actually got a couple of calls from people that lived on the pond that wanted to know what was going on. People who lived in Lakeville, I said, well, first of all, we can't really tell you. But a big shock, there was one fellow who got a zoning determination in Free Town that a lot was buildable. That changed the value of the lot. So his bill went up quite a bit, but he also owned property in Lakeville, so he got two really big bills.
That's tough.
And thankfully, Lakeville was able to resolve their issue, and, and there were other details we learned here that brought the value back down at least somewhat. So he got a reprieve from that, but double sticker shock. We, we don't want to have that.
That's what I was getting to. You know, it's one thing if residents know it's coming. It's another if it's, they open up their envelope and it's like, woo, 120% increase. Where's this coming from? I don't want that for our residents or even sitting board members, right? Because, you know, water property is right there, so thank you. That eases my mind.
All right, is there, is there a particular, so I guess, assessors board recommendation, which I know doesn't, if I remember correctly, doesn't.
Doesn't recommend, they give us.
We don't have a formal recommendation. It's not a formal recommendation.
I was thinking of that earlier on. I'm like, they're not going to give us any recommendations. They're going to give us the numbers.
You're making it hard for us.
They say that this.
I think that you've.
Encouragement.
Yeah.
To encourage.
We'll encourage you to the 1.6950.
Okay, yeah.
Based on our meeting that we had today.
Yep, okay. What, what, you folks have any strong opinions here?
No, because I, I mean, I'm some, I was saying, all right, as long as we end up somewhere between 1.645 and 1.695, I wouldn't want to go less than that or obviously more than that.
Funny you say that, because 1.67 was the one I was looking at.
I was just running some numbers. When you look at Amazon's increase at $10 million, the tax on the $10 million right now would be $201,000. So if you went up to the 1.67, that's like a 56 cents per thousand increase. It's about a $6,000 increase to Amazon. If you went up to the 1.695, that increase would be about $8,700. So, and that's only on the $10 million increase. Of course, that's, their actual bill is double that, and that's still only 50% of the value. But that might help you kind of put it in perspective, like, for me, like a $6,000 increase.
I think by Amazon, I, I cover that expense.
I was going to say. I joke with my wife that they have a street named after, they have an aisle that's named after my address there, so.
I think that's the case in most households.
Yes, especially at the Christmas season. But that's a really good example of when we say the averages are skewed.
Yeah.
Right? Mom and pop variety store is maybe going to go up 50 bucks. Amazon's going to go up 7,000.
Yeah, right.
Right, but their bill is 200,000. Their bill on just the 50% increase, so their bill is actually.
Oh, much more than that.
400,000, and that's still only 50%. So their real tax bill is $800,000. But you would also have to, yeah, you would have to, well, that's, that's just a Free Town.
So, so what you're seeing is 50% of the 40% that's here.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah. And the number I gave you was just on the 10 million.
You've got to remember, Amazon, probably in this, between Lakeville and Free Town, makes the 400,000 in probably a day or two.
In an hour or two.
I think my house alone was probably making half. This conversation.
So, I mean, we've all sat up here talking about how we proved the point, right? Of how much money to them versus to us, you know? And we, we talk about what, you know, the average employee for the town of Free Town, and certainly us three big dogs up here and all the money we're making. You know, all joking aside, it makes me, that, thank you, Debbie, that puts it into perspective a lot more for me. I love numbers, and that helps solidify the numbers. So I'm okay with going at that 1.695.
Okay, Carlos?
No, I'm okay with it. It's, it's a big win for the residents and businesses in town. And like Paul said, he's right, you know? Down the road, there are going to be talks of more buildings and things like that as we continue to grow. And this is a good way to let the people know, hey, we can do this responsibly in the right way. Right, so.
It pushes up the shelf, you know, yeah. Like, right now, we're in a position where we can give them a break. I like that kind of point. And so when we go to ask, you know, for, we have to, building a new town hall or something of that nature, like, you know, hopefully they are understanding. I don't know if they will be. Okay.
As long as they don't raise taxes.
So now, do I have to close the public hearing before we vote? I think so.
I would. Are you done collecting?
Are we done? Anything, anything else we need to talk about?
No, yes, I just, I don't. I know Melissa's on Zoom. I don't know if there's anything to add. Wizard of Oz, no?
You're right behind us too, here everywhere in 3D.
Oh, jeez.
Oh, hi, everybody.
Hi. Oh, there we go, all right.
Sorry I couldn't be there, but clearly we are well represented by the three people that are there, and I, I don't really have much to add. The discussion has been, would have been the same if I was there, so thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right.
So you, you'll close the hearing first, and then remember when you go to vote, I give the same little spiel every, every year. We have an awful lot of numbers that make sense and mean something on this chart. And then you have that column called Residential Factor that really means nothing to anybody, but that's what you're voting on.
Okay, thank you. That was going to be my question.
So. Somebody in a cubicle in Boston knows what that number means.
And you too, Mike.
So, but is that, actually, is voting on this actually on the agenda?
You got to set, yeah, you got to set the shift.
It's, I guess it's up here, but it's, yeah, it's above it, right?
To be borne by each class of property.
The selection of the residential factor, that's that odd number.
Okay, it's just like above the board of select part. That's fine, I can, it doesn't matter. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay, so without, so I'm going to motion to close the public hearing?
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. All right, so then agenda item one is in conjunction with the Board of Assessors relative to selection of the residential factor to determine the percentage of the tax burden to be borne by each class of property. So without, I will entertain a motion to utilize the residential factor. Is that the right terminology?
Yes, residential factor.
Uh, point eight zero eight seven.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loebz?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Okay, and then agenda item two, I, are we not ready to talk about that one yet? This is discussion properties that are being split into two lots.
Yeah, that was a little bit of a surprise, that is gonna require. I can give you in thirty seconds or less, um. Obviously, folks came out in force to the town meeting in June and voted no on apartments related to the train station.
Yep.
Uh, the state in August pretty much went ha ha and. Uh, changed a lot of things statewide and took away the ability of towns to have any say in that. One of those things was they removed virtually all restrictions on in-law apartments. So while we have voted no on train-related apartments. It is far easier for people to add in-law apartments to their houses now. And the town can no longer restrict things like renting them out or or whatever. So they're getting the apartments they wanted by basically doing a runaround the process that in order to play out. The other thing they did is they addressed common ownership and um again, the the thirty-second recap of that. Nineteen seventy-six, a law was passed, um. Basically, towns were learning through the zoning process and they were learning, I will pick on where most of us are at. Uh, towns across the state learned from places like Assonet Bay Shores that hundred by hundred lots are not really ideal. When you try to cram a house in a septic system in a well, all in that small of an area. So as towns uh were increasing their minimum lot sizes. There were conflicts and the state tried to resolve that by saying, okay. Uh, within five years, if you have not checkerboarded these, if you have not put them in different ownership or what have you. They are merging for zoning purposes and that's how we end up with people that have. Uh, one house has a ten thousand square foot lot, the house next to them has a twenty thousand square foot lot because the lots. Basically merged and you couldn't build.
I have one.
Right, yeah, so a- as part of the same sweeping apartment-related change. The state did away with common ownership and said, now if your lot has seventy-five feet of frontage and ten thousand square foot of area. Uh, then you can build on it if you want to. Um, provided that you can, again, fit everything in that one sort of square. What the result of that is gonna be, and we won't really have a better picture of this for another six months at least, is. People now have property that's worth more than it used to be because they can do more with it than they used to be able to do. Uh, we are trying to find a way to both be fair with that because. I will pick on Trevor since he identified himself. Trevor has a potential to cash out that Jared does not have because Jared has one lot and Trevor has two. Um, so we are trying to find the fair way to recognize that with, say, Trevor's assessment. Which will go up in some fashion, um, but without being. Devastating. There are people that bought these lots years ago because they wanted to have twenty thousand square feet, they didn't want a house fifty feet away from them. Um, so we are looking at what are the proper remedies so that if you have twenty thousand square feet and that's what you want and you want to be locked in at that. What step can you do to basically give up your right to develop it so that your bill does not go crazy? Um, what's gonna happen with somebody who has two lots that isn't sure what they want to do yet? And then, um. People who know for a fact that they want to develop that other lot. Uh, so things like getting a zoning determination is generally an idea to us that. If you've gone and gotten a zoning determination, you have some notion that you probably want to do something. Um, and uh. When we get a better handle on that, we're gonna have to notify people and say, hey, you know, by the way, the law changed and. You have options you didn't used to have, but with options come. Comes value.
Yeah.
Um, and if you.
Cause it could be, it could increase the tax base, right?
Oh, yeah.
Significantly.
Um, it can, and and it will be a little bit of a shock maybe at first because um. Land is valued. There are two main categories for land, basically you have developable and non-developable. Uh, within developable, you have different values of land and I won't bore you with all the crazy details of it, but um. There's your standard building lot and then there's another category, subcategory for if you have. Enough land and frontage that you could create a second lot. But you've not actually done that. Um, it's a way to recognize that, again, your land is a little bit more valuable than your neighbor's land. That's where a lot of people are gonna end up falling.
Yeah.
They're gonna end up falling in this subcategory that says. You may not want to, but you can, and if you don't do something to. Make sure that you can't, you can. Um, and then, of course, we we don't want people to be shocked by that, so we want to say, hey, you know, this is. Um, we ran some very preliminary numbers and going that route. Um. People might see a couple of hundred dollar increases in what they pay in taxes because they're gonna have that.
For someone like Trevor, you mean versus someone.
Yeah.
Sell that.
So next year, when the selectmen ask for fifty-two hundred dollars instead of fifty.
Yeah, exactly.
But, um, yeah, so like Jared, you or or I, we're not gonna see that change.
Yeah.
Um, Trevor might. Somebody else at that table who got a zoning determination is definitely going to, um.
Yeah.
If I rip it up, does that?
Um, but it.
But keep a coffee just in case I want to come back.
But it's important, like, that's gonna affect, um, one of the standards that the law relies on is was your property depicted on a plan? Not, did you just cut land out, what, had it actually been approved at one point by the planning board? So Assonet Bay Shores in nineteen sixty, that was approved as over three hundred ten thousand square foot lots.
Yep.
Those are all in one fashion, other in play, and you know, we would look at things too, like. Have you built your house across two lots? If you have, then you're obviously not going to break them up. Unless you're gonna tear your house down and start all over again, so. We're gonna look at something like that and say, eh, you probably know, you're not gonna be separating those. Um, but it's not just Assonet Bay Shores, right? Heaven Heights started out as summer houses, those are all plan-approved lots, um. That subdivision is older than Assonet Bay Shore, some of them actually don't meet the seventy-five foot requirement if you tried to separate the lots up. Uh, Hemlock Point. The Simpson Lane area, so I can pick on everybody equally because that started out as ten thousand square foot lots on the Simpson Lane side and Kane Lane and Nelson Lane. Um, people who just have random lots across town, somebody on Bullock Road, for whatever reason, there could have been a plan that said you have. A seventy-five by five hundred foot piece of land, that that's suddenly a viable building lot now. Um. It it's gonna bring about some changes, but we're not gonna know until we've done some research exactly what that's.
The state's gotta provide some kind of assistance and this, right, because they threw this at us, right, I mean.
Yeah, they don't seem to be in the mood to do that. Um, I feel like this was. I'm sure on the one hand, there were people in the State House who thought we're helping somebody and I'm sure there are other people who thought. All these towns are voting against what we want, so we're just gonna do it anyway.
Yeah, and then personally, it benefits me, I think, you know, just because I'm, but I could totally understand that, like, there's. There's uh some serious repercussions of this kind of change, right?
That's what happens, you make legislation at two o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
And pass it, so it's, you're right, I think it was a little bit rushed, but it's, the cars were dealt, right?
Yeah.
So.
Uh, but you know, there will be steps that people can take, like if somebody has two side-by-side lots and they really don't want them. Uh, individually developed, we can give them advice on these are steps you can take to to basically. Formally combine them so that you can't, and in some cases, that's happened already, there are people who previous owners. TV just looked like a checkered flag for a second. There are some people now who are finding, like, previous owners of the property actually did do plans and actually intentionally combined the lots. That's the most recent plan, so we look at that as, okay, that's what you have now, you can't go back to the other plan.
Yep.
Um.
Mike, do you have a way of knowing who has these lots and who doesn't so that you can notify them specifically?
Um, we will in about six months, so we did during COVID, maybe a little bit less than six, during COVID. We did a parcel-by-parcel review of every property we had in town to look at, um. That's when the town hall was shut down and it was, it was quiet.
Yeah.
Um, to be able to say, okay, is what people had actually correct? And we found a few things where like. Somebody might have a ten thousand square foot lot, but for some reason. It had been put in the computer that they had a nine thousand square foot lot, so surprise, we found the other thousand square feet.
Yep.
Um, and sometimes in reverse, sometimes they had eleven hundred and we found out they only had a thousand, whatever. Basically, kind of have to repeat that process now. To start at the first one and go one by one and say, okay. Ten thousand, ten thousand, ten thousand, not a big deal, oh, this is a twenty thousand square foot lot, what's the story with it, what is?
Yep.
And again, some neighborhoods, that's easily identified, we know we're gonna find that in Assonet Bay Shores and Heaven Heights and Hemlock Point and Meadow Lane and all these other. Um, all these other subdivisions. It's gonna be the places like in the middle of town. Where lots have just existed forever.
Yeah.
That we're gonna have to do a little bit more digging.
Yeah.
Um. But then at the end of that, we'll, you know, we'll send out notes that say, this is what's happened and this is kind of what you can expect and. Please, please don't angrily come at us because it's not our fault.
But there'll be ways for them to mitigate it.
There, yes, yeah, if they, um.
We don't penalize people who have have no intention of ever developing the land.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, you know.
And I think it's fair that if if you do have, you should, you should pay a premium for that opportunity, I mean, that that makes sense to me, like, I'd be feel comfortable. Paying a premium just to give me that flexibility someday, you know.
But if you definitely don't want it, you should.
But I just think that's fair, right, I I got, you know, I think.
Right, and and there's some things that uh come into, um. There are other factors besides simply the size and the frontage and all that. Um, we have some of the older subdivisions where the roads were never actually developed, so there's a subdivision called, um. Tattapinum. That you would never know was there because they built the houses along North Main Street and they built the houses along Pleasant Street. And running in between Pleasant Street and uh North Main Street is an old dirt road called Doctor's Lane. The lots on Doctor's Lane never got developed, um, they just stuck with what was there. So, yeah, so, um. While there may be some added value to the fact that those lots now have viability. The road is not there, they can't just walk out and start building a house on the lot, so there's gonna be consider. That's, again, sort of the stuff we have to look at, there's gonna be consideration to, you can build, but you can build if there's a road and there's no road.
And that's not cheap, so a lot of people aren't gonna build out a road to get.
Although, now, someone might buy the, build that road.
It depends, if you had five or six of these lots and you were really gonna cash out, it might be worth to try building a road, but.
Alright, well, that was, I think that was very informative and I appreciate that conversation, any other specific questions on that before we move on?
It's good information.
Yeah, um.
We gotta close on.
Oh, yeah, close, yep.
Yeah, I, well, actually. Well, before you adjourn, I got stuff for you to sign, so if you want to just go to quietly to a table in the back, we can.
Then we can, yeah, but we have to be on on tape because of the uh open meeting law.
Um, we do.
Yeah, so. Let's sign this document.
Alright.
Alright, so, what am I doing here?
You can, when they're ready to adjourn, they can.
Well, thank you, folks, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you, yes.
Alright, now moving on to agenda item three. Uh, discussion of whether uh for the call for the twenty twenty-five annual local election to be held on. Four, seven, twenty twenty-five, we have Cheryl, so town clerk here, thank you.
I feel like I just ended an election and we're already starting a new one.
I saw, I had to read this twice, I was like, wait.
Yeah. Don't write in. Uh, back in front of you again, as normal procedures to call for the election, just put everyone on notice that what positions are available. Uh, when the election's gonna take place, um, and that's not what you think, because we'll be available. The day we get back from New Year's break, which will be Thursday, January second, starting at nine AM. So, all the positions are listed there for you, if you want to go through them and then we can just.
Yeah. I I could just, I'm gonna just say them right now?
Yeah, so, um, just as an FYI, oh, sorry. So just as an FYI, um, the board of registrars have not met yet, we were trying to meet before tonight's meeting with you. Um, just in regards to a recommendation, um, and a discussion. Uh, based on uh vote by mail. So that I will come before the board again at a later time after we meet with the board of registrars for a discussion on that.
See if it's worth it or not.
So vote by mail, you've heard me say this for a couple of years now, it is mandatory, the state gives us some flexibility where we can opt out.
Yeah.
Uh, with a public hearing and a roll call vote, um, we've got some numbers and it's just uh making elections. Easier and more accessible with not costing a tremendous, not adding a tremendous cost to the town.
Yeah.
So.
And and burden to your department, um, and and if I remember correctly, the last time we could do this, we did. Right, so.
So, uh, so last calendar year, um, twenty twenty-three, we opted out, the board voted to opt out of vote by mail. Because absentee with cause was still available.
Yeah.
Um, this year, just to make it ease and less confusion because the state was notifying all the rest, all the voters with those mandatory postcards.
Yeah.
It would be too much of a confusion to let the voters know that, hey, you can vote by mail for these elections, but not for this one. So as just an, um. An easier understanding measure, we just did it across the board on the town state without having to mail out those applications because we piggybacked on the state.
Absolutely.
Okay, yep. Alright, so I'll read out the open position. Okay, so. These are the following open positions, we have one selectman and personnel board member, three-year term. One assessor, three-year term, one board of health member, three-year term, one cemetery commissioner, member, three-year term. Uh, three finance committee members, three-year terms, two library trustees, three-year terms. One planning board member, five-year term. One water and sewer commissioner, three-year term. One regional school district committee, Freetown, three-year term, and one regional school district committee, Lakeville, three-year term.
Correct.
I didn't miss anything, right?
Nope.
Okay. Alright, um. So, yeah, so it's April seventh, twenty twenty-five, anything else we need to talk about before we vote?
Nope, I did, um, forward you a proposed motion document, if you want to read that off and take a vote, and then we'll be good.
Alright. So, I'll turn a motion that the board of selectmen adopt this public notice to call for the April seventh, twenty twenty-five annual election, town election. And direct the town clerk to have said, uh, notice duly advertised and posted in accordance with the bylaws of the town of Freetown. And the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And is that suffice? So I have a motion?
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loebz?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Alright.
We want them to close.
Motion.
Oh, yeah, please.
During our assessors meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Paul?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright.
Hey, guys, thank you, guys.
Cheryl, thank you.
Cheryl. You're good, I think you're good, thank you, uh, just the next one's the clickers, I don't know if you're interested in that.
I I'll stay as long as I can, I do have to make it to Plainville.
Well, make this real quick for you. Alright, so next we have a warning the request for quotes for the uh voting clickers and we have, I guess we get one quote now.
Yeah, and it's never the one that you like, but.
Yeah, so it's.
So we did reach out to, um, all the companies and some were prepared to make. Um, some bids, some weren't, so we, that's what we have. Right now, this is the trend where a lot of the cities and towns, the communities are going to, so I. Can understand why they're tremendously, um, overloaded. They do make an appearance at all of our conferences, our Mass Town Clerks and our New England conferences. So it is, um. It is a trend, an increasing trend.
And this like, so, um, Meridia, right, that's the company, um. But they.
I've seen them in action.
Yeah.
I've seen them in action, um. Pretty, pretty standard across the board.
Okay, no concerns, I guess, really.
No concerns, um. My piece of it's gonna be the customer service end of it. So the reason why I put this forth, just so you know, the last time we put it out to bid, the bids came in higher than the article money that we had. So we couldn't, we couldn't award the bid. But we had some opera money left that has to be obligated by the end of the year, and I thought, well, let's get this done. Because I know it was a wish of the board to have these clickers and that way I can supplement the article money with opera money.
Perfect.
And that's why I asked Luanne, uh, to rebid it and do do the legwork for this, so that that was the timing of it. No other reason except if we want to get it done, we need to do it now to get the funding to obligate it with opera funds.
And and so the baby guy is for nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars.
Yeah, in, alright, yeah, I mean, obviously, you you've seen. Seen them in action and know that it seems like it's a good company, so that's, because that's the only thing I worry about is I'll spend twenty grand.
She went to another town, another town's town meeting and our town council was there, so it was pretty funny.
They they basically cover every town.
So, yeah, and we have sixteen thousand dollars in article money and we can supplement that with the four thousand dollars of opera money.
Perfect.
Awesome, okay, so with that, I'll turn a motion to award the uh bid for the voting clickers to Meridia.
A motion made.
Uh, before I vote, uh, we vote yes on this, is this me, we're gonna get him for the next election, next town election or town meeting? Will they be in on time?
That was in the RF queue.
Right, I haven't, well, I I don't see that right now, um. So, okay, so that's, then I'll second that motion then.
It's it's a pretty quick, if I may interject, it's a pretty quick turnaround. Um, it's just how busy they are, obviously, when you implement something like that, it's gonna require hardware assistance, it's gonna require. Um, IT personnel training, um, so the hardware itself is pretty readily available, unless you're doing something specific where. Um, you know, you're customizing them. The hardware is gonna be available, it's just a matter of scheduling, they only have X amount of staff and X amount of training that they can send out and as you know, the springtime. Is is busy, May and June are extremely busy for towns in Massachusetts, so.
And we we expect five hundred clickers. So there could be instances where we have a really crazy meeting that we don't have enough, just but.
Good.
I think that's what you might have put on the original that we thought was a a fair number to get us.
Yeah.
I haven't seen any, I haven't seen a meeting any larger than that, but we all know in the history it can happen.
Yeah, and in some, and in some instances when we are expecting where it's a hot topic. Um, you, there are opportunities and availability to rent additional clickers. I know, um, I reached out to other sub neighboring communities who also said they could let us borrow theirs. Um, we just have to be certain to make sure that they don't get mixed up.
Yeah.
But if they're from the same company, you know, our town clerk network is really good about sharing and caring. And they'll help us out if uh there happens to be a hot button subject.
We like borrowing, better than renting.
Clarified, didn't wanna say that the um, we did ask for it to be available for the June twenty twenty five. Date, which is to be determined, but we did note that if it was not doable. Uh, we're open to initiating this at our October twenty twenty five town meeting if necessary, but we did stress to do June.
Okay. Alright, so I think I got the motion, I got a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
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 Sleckman Lobes?
Yes.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes, alright, thanks Cheryl, appreciate it.
Thank you, have a safe ride.
Okay, so agenda item five, this is discussion of whether approve the twenty twenty five seasonal population increase estimate form required by the. A B C C and it looks like the number here is nine thousand two hundred and thirty-six. People with thirty seasonal people?
Correct.
Sounds right to me.
To me.
Okay.
I think it's sort of snowbirds, they're seasonal in New England.
Yeah. I wonder, yeah, the the seasonal must be at the only here in the summer, right?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, so with that, I will entertain a motion. To approve the twenty twenty five seasonal population increase estimate form required by the A B C C.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sleckman Lobes?
Yes.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes, alright, we're gonna skip agenda item six cuz we're missing some submissions for. Such a renewal certificates. Uh, agenda item seven, discussion of whether approve the following twenty twenty five, all alcohol beverage liquor license renewals. Uh, A is M and H uh Juniors Inc. and B is Circle K. Any questions or concerns?
No.
They've got all their paperwork in? Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Uh, A and B from the list for the twenty twenty five all alcohol beverage liquor license renewal.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sleckman Lobes?
Yes.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes, agenda item eight, this is the twenty twenty five wine and malt beverage liquor license. So A is M and H Grandpa's Inc. and B is Mason Road Food Mart Corp. Any questions or concerns on those?
No.
No.
Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve A and B for the twenty twenty five wine and malt beverage liquor license renewals.
A motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sleckman Lobes?
Yes.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes, okay, agenda item nine, this is for the twenty twenty five all alcohol liquor to be drunk on premise license renewals. A is Carlsley Inc., AKA The Ledge. B is Independence Harbor, C is Profile Rock uh Inc. slash The Profile Tavern. And D is Freetown Memorial Post six six four three for the VFW. Any questions or concerns on these?
No.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the twenty twenty five all alcohol liquor license. For uh to be drunk on premises license renewals for A through D.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sleckman Lobes?
Yes.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes, right, agenda item ten, this is for twenty twenty five entertainment license renewals. A, we have Profile Rock Inc., Profile Tavern, B, we have Freetown Memorial Post six six four three VFW, and C, we have Independence Harbor. Question or concerns about that?
No.
No.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the twenty twenty five entertainment license for A through C.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sleckman Lobes?
Yes.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes. Agenda item eleven, haven't missed anything yet, right?
Nope.
Okay, uh, this is for the annual renewal license for um Freetown. Via uh Memorial Post six six four three VFW for jukebox and automatic device license. Any questions or concerns on that? And so that I'll entertain a motion to approve annual license renewal for the uh VFW for the jukebox and automatic device license.
A motion made.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sleckman Lobes?
Yes.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes, okay, agenda item twelve, this is for class two motor vehicle license renewals for twenty twenty five. A, we have Chopperhead Industries Inc., DBA Chopperhead Custom Cycles, B, Mark H Bullock, DBA AAA Auto Sales. C, Sandman Corp., DBA Sandman Auto Sales. D, Armin M Kerma, uh, DBA Kermit's Auto Sales. E, Dean Markel. Markel, DBA Miller's Auto Sales and S, uh, F, Coparts of Connecticut, DBA Copart. Any question or concerns on all these?
No.
No.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the class two motor vehicle license for uh twenty twenty five for. A through F.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sleckman Lobes?
Yes.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes. Agenda item thirteen, this is class three motor vehicle license renewals for twenty twenty five. We have Miller uh Millis Industries, DBA Pick and Pull for A, and B is Donald F. Mendoza, Mendoza. Uh, Junior, DBA DM Auto Enterprises, questions or concerns?
No.
No.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve the class three motor vehicle license renewals for A and B from the agenda.
A motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Lobes?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes. Uh, agenda item fourteen, this is for uh. The motor vehicle graveyard license for um for pick and pull. Any question or concerns on that?
No.
Alright, so that I'll entertain a motion to approve the motor vehicle graveyard license for Millis Industries Inc., DBA Pick and Pull.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nope, sorry, Sleckman Lobes?
Yes.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes. It's like, it's like most times you.
Nothing over here.
Most of the times you remembered, I forgot.
Yeah.
And then the one time.
That that whole succession there was like very automated, so I don't blame you for.
Okay, uh, agenda item fifteen, this is some snowplow applications for winter twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. Uh, A is Zussi Brothers LLC, B is SM Automotive, and C is Barry Emerald. Any questions or concerns with those?
No, happy to see him coming in.
Yeah, all good. Everything's good. I knew it wouldn't be on the agenda if it wasn't, but just asking.
So maybe maybe Wednesday or Thursday that we put to use.
I know.
You never know.
Alright, so with that, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve. The snow applica- uh, snowplow applications for winter twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, with for for A through C on the agenda.
A motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sleckman Lobes?
Yes.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes, alright, agenda item sixteen, discussion of what to do with the town buildings for the December holidays slash events. Christmas is on.
I don't think you did for the Senator's Party.
No, not the Senators, but the town of the Employees Party.
They did vote at the last meeting.
So Luanne did a survey for sort of departments. Um, what they were hoping to get for Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. All over the place, I'm not gonna say that they're not, I I think that the majority of the day can be worked. I can see letting the staff out a couple of hours early on Christmas Eve for those people that have to travel or. Um, have stuff to do at home, have kids to get ready. Maybe two o'clock, but any sooner than that, I. I just, I just don't see it, they can always use their personal time.
Yep.
Off. Um, you know, when we close the town hall, they don't use their personal time off, they just get paid for that time regardless. So, I struggle a little bit with this because they they get, you know, a fair benefit package with days off.
Yep.
So. Um, you know, this, this is what, this is what Luanne just showed me, so each department.
You know, I mean, I would.
At New Year's, I don't think there should be any concessions. I think New Year's, everybody should just work their regular hours for New Year's Eve.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with that, definitely Christmas, I'm thinking to your point is maybe if we closed even a couple hours early. I mean, cuz to people, people, myself included, I, you know, I have a family party that starts earlier in the day, so. I I do want.
Use your personal.
I use, I, and to your point is, yes, I have to use my personal time. So that's why I'm thinking that if we said, okay, you know, say two o'clock, that gives them a couple hours early, I don't know, what, I mean.
Even three o'clock, I mean, I think Highway works seven to three generally, and you know, there's always that. You know, there's that unfairness when the town hall closes early and they get paid those hours and they don't have to use their PTO, but police and fire don't get that. Highway doesn't get that, do you know what I mean? So I'm always careful, I have to. Like, you you have to take that into consideration, and it is, it is valid, right? It's valid to those departments who say, I gotta work Christmas Eve cuz I'm a. Right, so I always have to try to balance it, I I won't be working Christmas Eve, but I will use my PTO. Which is what it's there for, right, my vacation or my personal days, whatever I have, so. Um, I struggle with um, and some of it is, you know, like the library, if there's only, there's only one person on, they. They can't go home, so, but I think they've said they've worked, they've.
Worked it out on their.
They've worked their own situation out, so they don't, they're not asking for any concessions.
So I mean, you really don't need to do anything then.
Uh, well, I mean, I think their departments kind of ask and and we, Luanne asked and and presented to you, I like I said, it's a struggle for me. Uh, because I know I won't be there, I'm taking that day off, um. And I'm okay with some departments closing if there's no staff. I'm okay with that because people will understand on Christmas Eve if a department is closed because there's no staff and they'll come back on another day. So.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm looking at even what, you know, COA said that, you know, they'll close early, but. Their employees will take their time, you know, to get paid, so, yeah. I don't know.
Cause the op- what, what, it closes at five, right? Four, I'm sorry, I meant to say four.
Everything closes at four, Highway closes, they're done at three. And I mean, like I said, my issue is this sort of inconsistency, be if the town hall gets the extra hour and they just get it paid. And they don't have to use their PTO. It, and that happens like when I call a snow day, right? Police and fire is still working, highway is still working. And it's, part of it I explained to them is the nature of the job, we all have different jobs. Um, I mean, I don't get to work a twenty-four hour shift, two twenty-four hour shifts and have the rest of the week off either, right? We know it, there's inherent things in our jobs, uh, but I do try to be fair and be cognitive of that fact. Um. That we, you know, so, I I I don't have a, I don't necessarily have a recommendation, and maybe a. Close the town hall at three o'clock on that day, highway works till three, um.
I saw, I think that, based on the points you brought up, I think that's a valid recommendation.
Three PM? So just close an hour early?
What do you think, Carl?
Sleckman Lobes?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great conversation you guys are having, and and it's, I I agree with it, it's like I'm I'm in the middle of all of it, right? Like, it's a busy time of year, we definitely have to be cognizant of all the unions and all the different contracts we have and, but also. Our personnel are also matter and are important to us, right? Some may may maybe new, they don't have time off, uh, those are things I think about during the holidays, new job, new responsibilities, right? Um, closing a little bit early, I'd I'd be I'd be okay with, like, even looking at these coming in, they're only asking for an hour or two off to begin with, right? Except for the Council of Aging, but they have something else to do that day. So, yeah, uh, what'd you say, three o'clock?
Yeah, I think that's fair, I think that gets most people.
That's just for the, for Christmas Eve.
Christmas Eve.
Yeah.
I agree. I have kids, do people still do Christmas uh New Year's Eve?
I'll I'll be in bed at eight.
I will ask this, to be fair. Highway will not get the benefit of an hour because they work till three?
Yeah.
Can we let them go at two?
I was just gonna say, I'm glad you said that, cuz I was just gonna say that they should be getting something, now, the problem is, is it's a steamroll effect, you know, police and fire that would, you know, but. To your point, it's kind of inherent in what they do.
Right.
That that's they understand, so it's a little bit different, no disrespect, gentlemen and ladies, but. Um, yes, I think that we should let. Highway off at two and everyone else off at three.
Okay. That's fine, I mean, so, I'll answer the motion.
Well, what about transfer station, I'm sorry.
Three with them too cuz they work till four.
Yeah.
Alright, yeah, so they don't, yeah, okay, yeah, nevermind, I apologize, thank you, I apologize.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion that Highway. Um, on Christmas Eve. Leaves uh, day ends at three.
Two.
Two, sorry, and transfer station and town hall will close at three.
And council on aging.
And council on aging. Close at three.
Libraries are all set, right?
I'm sure they work on their own.
Uh, motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sleckman Lobes?
Yes.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes. Alright. And then, agenda seventeen, this is whether or not to close the council on aging at noon on December nineteenth. Twenty twenty four for annual holiday parter, party for older residents of the VFW. Sounds good to me, sounds fun.
I think Senator Rogers is putting this party on for them and they have asked them to serve, so they they need to close the COA to go through this.
Okay.
Yeah.
No issues, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to close the council on aging at twelve PM on twelve nineteen twenty twenty four for the annual holiday party. For older residents at the VFW.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sleckman Lobes?
Yes.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, agenda item eighteen, um, this is acknowledged disclosure form from Debbie, uh, Debbie Petty, town administrator. So there's uh, is there, there's two disclosures?
There are.
Yep, so one of them, um, is related to her brother.
Was her nephew?
Sorry nephew, sorry.
Class three motor vehicle license that we did.
Yeah, so he has, he owns a, uh. A place, they got a class three motor vehicle license, that, that's fine, and then. The second disclosure form is related to a, um, is Deb's daughter.
Nope, I think we already did that one. No, no, maybe. Is her daughter is the recording clerk.
Yeah, daughter, uh, is, uh, applied for a job as a reporting clerk, uh, so. Just kind of that, you know, the appearance of a conflict of interest could be there, she's disclosing it, um, and also there's budget, you know. Part of the budget is prepared by Debbie related to that, so I think the, the remedy there is that, um. You know, Luann will prepare that part of the budget. I don't see any issues with that. Anyone have questions or concerns?
And the chairs of each committee or board sign off on that payroll anyway.
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah, no issues here.
Okay. So that's the same, and so I guess I covered kind of eighteen and nineteen. I covered eighteen, I talked about eighteen and nineteen, but I think we have to vote.
Yeah, it's a little different, cause eighteen was acknowledging the disclosure, but the other one you have to vote, cause you're.
Yep, so nineteen is just discussing. Alright, so, um, with that, I'll entertain a motion to, um. To vote that Debbie, Debbie Petty's financial interest in employing a family member will not be a major financial impact disclosure form or accept that.
Motion made.
Second.
All favor? Alright, agenda item twenty, discussion and vote on replacement of well at James White Library.
So you know, we just leased this property. Has failed, um, I meant to call them and ask them if they had water now that we've got a little bit of rain, but we had, uh, of course. Carl, uh, went out there, he had a company come out and look at the well. It's a shallow well. And it's run dry, so we need to drill a well, um, the cost is about nine thousand dollars to drill the well. And we're trying to, the, the pump might be four or five thousand dollars, so it's a fifteen thousand dollar expense. We will take it out of our building improvement, um, fund, but I just, I, you know. I wanted to make sure we're looking at Fossom, who is. Who Carl, they work with Carl a lot on different things when we needed them, they've helped us. Because this is like an emergency, cause we don't have water now at the library, the one library that does have running water no longer has running water. Yeah, I, I consider it an emergency for procurement purposes and I'm not putting it out to bid. Um, they have said that they can come in, uh, about three weeks and that was a couple weeks ago, so we're expecting them to come, but I obviously wanted to make sure that. You were aware of what was going on and that, um, you're okay with us to move forward to replace the well.
Yeah, any questions or concerns?
Yeah, no. No, I'm all for replacing the well. My concern is, so my question is, I should say is, um, we just leased this building. When was the study conducted? Before or after the lease was signed?
It just happened.
Just, I, I know the well just happened, but there wasn't any indications prior to signing the lease that this well was not functioning properly.
Not that I'm aware of, I mean, don't forget, we just replaced the septic system.
I know, that's, that's why I'm asking the questions, like. We need a library, that's, that's not the question. We support the library, that's not the question. I'm just making sure that we didn't sign it and with, with knowing that there was something wrong.
No, we specifically didn't sign the lease until the septic was redone, you know, and they, the trustees, the owners of the building paid. At least for half of that septic repair, um, so no, I was not aware of anything to do with well or water issues, nobody has ever. Um, told me Carl hadn't mentioned anything, Nicole hadn't mentioned anything. I think this is just because of that drought possibly. Um, and it is a shallow well. So, um, so there was like no study done, just Carl had, when they ran out of water, he called. And he investigated and the gentleman came out and said, yeah, you needed a well.
Cost of doing business.
So, alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to, um, replace the well at the James White Library.
Motion made, second.
All favor?
Sleckman Loops? Sleckman Zager. Sleckman Matthews.
That, that suffices, I don't need to get into any more spec- specificity there.
No, like I said, it's an emergency, so I'm not gonna worry about procurement and I'll get the, the best company I can out there. This is the, the quickest company is really what I'm looking at.
Okay, Jen nine twenty-one, discussion of whether approve the agreement for weights and measures services beginning on one one twenty twenty-five. And I forget.
It's just the state contract, right?
Is that what it is?
Yeah, the state actually.
The division of weights and measures comes out and does our testing for us. Um, they had some new ones that they didn't have on the list before that they've added, so it's gonna be nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars for them to do that service.
And it, this is passed on to. We pass this on, right, so it's kind of net. Either low impact or be a. I forget what it is, but we don't lose money on it, do we?
We haven't, I mean.
That much, we used to.
We, yeah, we used to, um, pay them four thousand a year and we just, we just paid it. The budget, and then last year, I think we put something at town meeting where we could collect the fees, so we, it's a pass through. Some, I mean, I think we've had one person who didn't pay, so there are those situations, but, um, I think that's just a. Just a timing miscommunication thing, I think we will collect the money.
It still wasn't four thousand dollars, so we're still much better than we were.
Passing it through to the, to the, the users of the weights and measures.
Alright, so with that, any questions or concerns? We good? So without, I want to entertain a motion to approve the agreement for weights and measurements services beginning one one twenty twenty-five.
Motion made, second.
All favor?
Sleckman Loops? Sleckman Zager. Sleckman Matthews.
Alright, Jen nine twenty-two, this discussion of whether approve the following policies, so policy A is, uh, disposition of surplus equipment policy.
So I just have one, I was just looking at this and one of the things that has come up. Uh, I mean, I'm, I'm okay, but one of the things I wanna say is sometimes we have stuff that we want to donate. And this does not give us the opportunities. I don't know if you want me to take it back and kind of tweak it a little bit.
Yeah, cause I think that that does come up a lot.
And, and I'm not taught, maybe I can change the dollar figure for that. I, for instance, we have the stove that came out of the Seaway, which is a big commercial sized stove. And we've moved it into the highway barn and it's just sitting there and I actually would like to donate that to, uh, five oh one C three. Um, we were gonna put it in the, the fire station, but then it became too expensive because of the hood system that you would need to put in there, like it's like a restaurant stove. So like the, like the VFW who's so good to the town and partners with those and lets us use their, I, I haven't asked them, I'm just saying, but I can't, we don't have a vehicle to do that. So I, I know when we talked to the attorney, um, town council, he said, under ten thousand, the board can do what they want. But this policy once we enact, doesn't cover it, so I just wanna, I'm, I'm sorry for the late disclosure, but I wanted to.
It makes sense to me, so we're gonna keep.
Just hold on this one, yeah.
And then, so B is cash and cash investment. Um, and then C is cash and cash, so, sorry, B is cash and cash investments, investments, and C is cash and cash investments, uh, tailings.
And these are fine.
Nothing crazy in these.
I think these are kind of already in place, just not maybe written.
Any questions or concerns on these?
No, no, this is just cleaning, cleaning house.
You know, and these can be changed by you at any time, so it's kind of, I'm just trying to get baseline policies in, in effect so that. You have somewhere to start from.
No, I totally, it's a, it's a good thing to do, and sometimes just writing these things down realizes it's a hole in the policy, like you just realized, right? Like, you know. Okay, so with that, I want to entertain a motion, uh, to approve the policies A, B and C from the agenda.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Sleckman Loops? Sleckman Zager. Sleckman Matthews.
Uh, Jen nine twenty-three, it's discussion of vote with Claire, the nineteen eighty-seven John Deere six four four D. Loader a surplus and use as trade for a new loader purchase, and this was, this is the one that's currently at the transfer station.
Yes, yep, and we were able to, we, we had just enough, I think, opera funding, so win-win.
Awesome. Any questions or concerns on this?
This is great, no, I'm happy to see this.
So with that, I want to entertain a motion to approve or to do, I want to entertain a motion to declare the nineteen eighty-seven John Deere. Six four four D loader surplus and use it as traded for the new loader purchase.
Motion made, second.
All favor?
Sleckman Zager. Sleckman Matthews.
Alright, twenty-four, this is a change order from Unicon Inc. For town hall window replacements, amount of six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes, and this is to accommodate lead paint, which we didn't put in the RFP when we put it out to bid, so there was a little bit of different, um. Procedures that needed to take place, so this is, um, I, I think it's reasonable for what, what the job entailed, so.
Makes sense to me. Questions or concerns?
And we know that the windows are in and it went, I, I, I'm so afraid to even say it, but it went so seamlessly.
And they look good.
They look good, I, and, and people are happy. I don't even know.
Is it quieter inside?
It's quieter, it's warmer, it's unbelievable, um, and it's unbelievable. Ninety-three windows in that building, there's, so two screens are ripped that will get replaced, and I think two windows came in the wrong size, but other than that. They worked, they had like eight or nine people there. It was a well-oiled machine Friday, Saturday and Sunday. And really a big, big shout out to Carl who, who babysat all weekend there. Um, I stopped in, but he was there all weekend. I'm not sure if Tim also came in.
He was there as well Saturday.
But, uh, yeah, it's, uh. You know, you always, you know, these things have to happen, but you always concerned about what's gonna go wrong in an old building like that. And I, I don't know.
Things just sitting great when you try to put in, you know, but that's, hey, that's great at work.
So the windows open and close. They would slam, so yeah, great, the company did what they said they were gonna do, no issues.
We had Cheryl in here before talking about the fact that once they took her curtains down and she was backed up to the windows before they were replaced, how cold she was getting. So, that's when you know how bad the windows were.
They would, it, the windows, cause they don't close, would blow the papers right off my desk if it was a windy day.
You know, the real question is, if you go around town hall, a lot of these windows have those little drapings in between the windows to stop the draft. Right? Are they still there? Oh, they're, they're moving out to the doorways now.
Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the change order from Unicon Inc. For the town hall window replacements, the amount of six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion made, second.
All favor?
Sleckman Loops? Sleckman Zager. Sleckman Matthews.
Yes, alright, Jen nine twenty-five, this is to award bid for digitalization of building department records project. It looks like the low bid is Inception Technologies Inc. At thirty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars, which is substantially lower than everybody else.
And we get this funding at the last town meeting, to do this project and it's gonna coincide with the moving of the office, so we're gonna send the files out from. The town hall now, move the rack to the new location and then have them delivered back to the new location, so they actually gonna be moving our files for us, which is a win-win.
Yeah, fantastic, yeah, definitely a win-win.
That's amazing.
Any questions or concerns? So it looks like we're gonna go with Inception Technologies. Uh, so with that, I want to entertain a motion to award the digitalization of building department records to Inception Technologies Inc.
Motion made, second.
All favor?
Sleckman Loops? Sleckman Zager. Sleckman Matthews.
Alright, Jen nine twenty-six, this is whether, um. To approve and sign the quote from Inception Technologies. So the quote, it's at thirty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars? And that's still a, a valid, right? So with that, I want to entertain a motion to approve and sign the quote for Inception Technologies Inc. for digitalization of building department records project.
Motion made, second.
All favor?
Sleckman Loops? Sleckman Zager. Sleckman Matthews.
Yes, alright, uh, Jen item twenty-seven. This is discussion of vote whether we accept donation from the Free Town Senior Club to the Council on Aging, the amount of a hundred and fifty dollars. Anyone have an issue with accepting a hundred and fifty dollars from the Free Town Senior Club?
No, thank you.
I'd like to hear about it if you do. Alright, now, thank you very much, Senior Club.
Absolutely.
We appreciate that. Uh, so with that, I want to entertain a motion to accept the donation from the Free Town Senior Club to the Council on Aging in the amount of a hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion made, second.
All favor?
This last one is just, you had voted to close the town hall on twelve six, we don't need to.
Oh, nice, so.
So just of, of, you know, vote, to leave the town hall open normal hours.
Yep, perfect, so with that, I want to entertain a motion to, uh, keep the town hall open with regular hours on. December sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion made, second.
All favor?
And we talked about, Luann already sent off stuff to the, our employees. Right, did have the employees been made aware that we are gonna keep town hall open on Friday?
I don't think we ever told them we were closing, we, we told them. But we'll send out an email tomorrow, but we had only mentioned the, the first Friday, um, to them. Because we got noticed that they thought they could do it in one weekend. I was skeptical, so they did it.
Very good, thank you.
Alright, Sleckman Loops, ah, it's a long one. Personal board, I'm agenda twenty-nine, acknowledged resignation of Matthew Bohms from single operator effective eleven twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. Thank you, Matthew, um, happy holidays.
Alright, uh, discussion and vote on whether to issue certificate of division for Super Bowl champions. Yeah, I think it's kind of a, an easy thing to do. We'll have to figure out when, right, and we can.
Yeah, between the, the players and families and the coaches and the team moms, I don't, I think it'll exceed our ninety percent capacity in this building. So, still to think about when we do plan it down the road.
Yeah, yeah, so we, we're gonna have to figure that out, and I guess maybe we can reach out to them and see what they think for the amount of people that. Cause then that does add, uh, uh, some complexity to it all, right?
Or, yeah, I mean, maybe we, we can, you know. I don't know if we have to have them all come in, right, maybe we could send a representative with signed certificates for them.
They, they do have a banquet calling up, uh, sometimes December, maybe if we get it in our time, we can. Present them there, or give it to them, they can hand them off there. Yeah, the options are available.
Yeah, that's actually, that's a good call, I would think, rather than trying to figure out where we can, cause then that would mean we have to probably go to one of the schools. And, and, um, do that, so. One of us could go and, so, yeah, I like that. I don't know, is there, I mean, I guess I can, I can say that we can, um. Issue them and then we'll have details to follow.
Language on the certificate and. All they, they have all people's names, like that's a kind of a lot.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we can figure out where, uh, you know, to get all their names and stuff, um, so. Alright, so, um, with that, I entertain a motion to, uh, issue certificates of division four Super Bowl champions.
Make that motion, second.
All those in favor?
Sleckman Loops? Sleckman Zager. Sleckman Matthews. I know I have an email with the names of the, um, kids, is there one of you that you want me to work with the language on what's gonna be on the certificate?
Um, yeah, I mean, it can be one of, I don't care, you want it to be me, it means.
It's, that's up to you.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'll, I'll handle it, and so if it falls under my, my purview, so I'll. Okay, thank you. And then, agenda item number thirty-one, discussion and vote whether to add lights to telephone poles on Long Pond near, uh, the football field. Uh, so this is an interesting one, as you know, there's not many houses or anything on that road. Um, and then, so there's not a lot of light. Um, we do have a lot of, uh, sports activities that happen there, so. Um, you know, one of the things that you, you know, you, what's the reason to have these lights is really safety. So, you know, I, do I think that we should light the place up like a landing strip? No, but I can see, you know, anyone who knows that road knows that it does take about a ninety degree bend to the right when you go in. Um, so that's kind of a dangerous, you know, a dangerous curve right there where there's no light right now. Um, and then, before that, you have parking for all the. Fields is off to the left-hand side and then the fields are to the right-hand side, you kind of come over a hill, so I guess if I was. Wanting to do this and associate the cost, the cost is minimal, right?
Seven hundred, six hundred bucks, right?
Six hundred bucks to install them, but then it's, um. Hold on, I'm sorry, was it, I gotta get to the amount, but.
Seventeen a month?
Yeah, there we go, seventeen holes in one. So if I was okay with doing this, I really would say that I wouldn't want more than two lights. And I would say that the two lights would really be. Um, one at the beginning part, where you kind of transition into where people could be crossing. Um, so you have that safety and then one at the corner, where it does take a ninety degree corner. Um, but I, I don't wanna get us into the point of lighting the whole place up. And then everyone coming to us, every resident coming to us that says I want a street light, and then, you know, this isn't much money. But it can add up in a hurry if we start giving out them to every single. Every single person that comes in looking for them. So, it was something that was brought before us and I thought it was a reasonable thing to talk about, you know, as a board and, um. You know, wait out, because it is a little bit different of an area where you don't have a lot of light from the housing, right where.
No light pollution?
Yeah, there's no, yeah, exactly, so, so the road can be very dark. So, so it's really more of a, I look at this as more of a safety issue.
Well, I agree, to their credit too, the football league, they've, they've added, you know, spotlights, cameras and everything else, um, it's just. Not adequate enough for the safety portion of it, right? I, I think, uh, the higher poles and everything else, especially, like you said, crossing the street. Gosh, I can't, I can't even tell, I mean, near misses from the kids just running from four different practices across the street into the dark area. This would just illuminate it, and you're right, that bend is, uh. It's interesting, to say the least, so.
Yeah, yeah, makes sense to me. I didn't know there's houses back there. There's none if you go back by it, there's a few home, there's like four.
Beyond the beach, and then there's some houses up in the front side.
Yeah, see, I knew that.
I knew the ones up in the front.
But there, there's waterfront properties. On that backside, yeah. So, I'm not old in the waterfront, actually, I take that back. Properties, yeah, so. So the, of those people, that's kind of their roadway into their house and whatever, so I mean, there's something to be said about the average residents. And I don't want to get it to the point of I'm trying to light up the beach area and whatever, it's, I just think that.
But there's kid, yeah, it's dark and I I'm.
These kids, it's safety.
I mean, is this for the football players?
I not necessarily, and that's the thing, that's why I hesitate to say, well, if if it's just strictly football related. Then we need to go after them, for I say after them, have them involved in the cost of it all. The corner, this is my idea based on what was brought to me as to. How I feel that safety-wise, we should really go after this. If we're gonna put lighting there, I don't wanna put five or six lights to light up the field for football. That's all this is about, to me, it's where would we put lights, and if I, you know, traveled that road a lot. Where does it make sense to put lights for safety, more so than to light up those fields, to light up the road.
Where are the poles, right, you're gonna put this light.
Right-hand side.
They're all there.
Yeah, they're on this side, so that's why I'm saying like one here and then one up over here, so when you start getting. Because it's before the parking where people are crossing over. It's not a road that we're gonna be able to put a true crosswalk in and do all that stuff that we can do in other places. So, I just think that for safety, if we're gonna put them somewhere, that's it, and and listen, if the board tells me that they don't want them at all. Or only want one, I I'm okay with it, or if you tell me you want more than two, I might try and argue that, but I mean.
I think start with two and then if we have need to revisit it. Plus or minus, you know, take it from there.
Yeah, I I mean, I I I just, I am also cognizant of the the fact of is. Debbie hears and sees this and says, well, you know, it's, I'm on a corner at my house and I'm.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, I'm thinking, of course, what I think, where am I getting the money from, so I can't do too many, cause I don't have a fund for this, right? I don't have a resource to pull the money out of, I'll take it out of facilities, but I, you can't say I want six of them, cause I don't have that kind of money available.
Yeah, well.
You have to wait till a town meeting or a vote, you know what I mean, but I can.
So then, I would say that why don't we do this pending. Getting the resources, cause I don't want you trying to pull it from the hat, that, you know, so. It's it's a val- a valid point.
I mean, if I have some opera money left, I certainly can do that, I, but I think this, that loader really pushed me with, and then of course, we just did the clickers. I think that just pretty much cleaned up opera, there may be some interest that we're earning on the money that's sitting in the bank. That when it hits my um balance sheet, that I have a couple of grand, so then I could put in these two at least and then go from there. But in the, like, if you want more than that, I'm just gonna say, like, that's a, that's something that we're gonna have to figure out the funding for.
I think that's, I think that that's being reasonable based on safety of. The first light being more mindful of the fact of people crossing back and forth between the two areas. And the second one being that it's a sharper corner, right, you know, when it's.
Crazy down there at night.
Yeah, exactly, so that's why I, I mean, I just, it was brought to me and I've. I see both sides of it and I don't want to, you know, so I had asked Luann about this and there, there hasn't been a ha- a hard ask of people. Coming to us asking for streetlights, cause that's, you know, it's it is a real concern to me that you all of a sudden. We have to be fiscally responsible, right, and we all of a sudden say, okay, we'll do it here, and then we're gonna have other people come saying, I want it, and then, you know.
We own the streetlights, which means we also have to repair them and maintain them, so it's, so different towns, it's different, but we do own our own. That that adds it, but I, but I mean, safety is paramount and, you know.
And there's just kids around, like, I I think this, I, it's not like. This, it makes sense to me to have streetlights here.
And I think going forward, I mean, one of the things that I wanted to do was to get power down to that beach. Um because of the expense of it, it needs to go out to bid, and we didn't do that, but it may be something that we're looking to fund at a future town meeting. And we can add some lighting in then too, because I, we would like to have utilized the beach more for events, but there's no power. So, in order to try to be as fair as we can be with having events on both ends of the town, this is one of the. The places that we talk about, but because of the power, it limits us, so I think going forward, you, we we would definitely be looking at doing something. At over there for power and then you could do more lighting at that time.
So, I I guess here's my thing is, do we just hold this vote until we bring it to?
I think you could vote for the two and I can, I think that I I can probably get that out of opera or get that out of facilities budget. I just know more than that is gonna start to be like.
So you, but you're you're comfortable, cause that seems I don't.
The two, and I think it makes the most sense and and give, it alleviates maybe the critical needs. And then from there, I think we'd be looking at a bigger project anyways to try to bring power and more lighting down there.
And I mean, I guess through at this point, we don't.
Safety reasons too, cause we get, you know, we'd be vandalized if you don't put lights up.
Well, that's the thing, right, like, so long-term, you're training, your line of thinking is correct, we're thinking about improving that area. Take a little little bite out of here and there, eventually it will be done, right? Uh the ultimate goal is to make that place more inviting to the residents at for activities, because you're right, it's. Can't always be at the the bandstand or at the baseball parks and these.
Right out of love, yeah, totally agree.
I agree. Alright, so um. Get, I guess we'll go with the two, so with that, I will entertain a motion to add. Um two lights to the telephone poles um on Long Pond Road. Near the football fields, one being at the beginning and then one being on the ninety-degree corner.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Sleckman Loops?
Yes.
Sleckman Zager.
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews.
Yes, alright, we'll sign.
Based on what the voting did tonight was, I can imagine we are gonna have a lot to sign.
We have, um I just had something on the old business, we had talked about putting um the ACO's vehicle on municipal. Two thousand and ten Ford Expedition, which Luann has done, we're not, we haven't gotten any bids, we put it on for two thousand. So they recommend that we lower the price to eight hundred, we don't have to sell it if we don't get a bid high enough. But that was the vehicle that had like holes in the floorboards and whatnot, so we're just looking for a permission from the board to reduce the um price.
Yeah, do you even vote for that?
I would vote it, uh you know, just to.
Yeah, so I'll entertain a motion to reduce the um price of the, is it expedition?
Yeah, two thousand and ten.
Expedition uh on uni- uni-bid to eight hundred dollars.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is it red? Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
There's only one signable copy on each one, right?
This one's just by itself.
One more meeting and then it's Christmas, I can't even.
Christmas.
It's December.
You guys decorating the house, getting ready for the town competition?
I started to, yes.
I have an outdoor Christmas tree this year.
That's exciting.
If you guys go by Simpson Lane, you look up towards my house, the lights are started, they have started.
We started driving.
Do you know the date?
We started driving around last night.
Fourteenth for the decoration, yeah, fourteenth, that's that's a. No, Saturday, Saturday.
We actually drove through your neighborhood last night looking at um decorations.
Oh, nice.
But it's always something my family and I.
Last night was stringing up the lights that were out, re- re-feathering things throughout the.
On another note, I just wanna let you know that Kylie's doing a sipping, uh paint and sip at the VFW event for the town. Tickets are free, but there's something going on on Facebook, people saying they bought tickets and they can't go and they're trying to resell them. So everybody needs to know the event was free, so if you have extra tickets and you can't go, you just need to return them to the community program director, but. For everybody listening, there is no tickets for sale, they were free, do not buy tickets, contact the community program director.
Someone trying to scalp.
I think it might be a scam, I I I think it's a scam, I don't know. Um we trying to curtail it on Facebook in the office today, but if anybody's listening, maybe it will be helpful. Yeah, right, we can't even give a, have a free event and offer it to the residents of Free Town without. Trying to make a buck off of that.
I I repeat that same.
You wanna buy this free ticket at half a sale?
Can't beat the price.
So yeah, there was a blood drive recently and I guess Ky- Kylie men, you know, organized that and Luann saying that they filled all their appointments, so that's cool.
That's awesome.
They're in big supply for blood these days.
And Lights On is Sunday down at the bandstand, I I have other plans unfortunately, cause I usually like to go there.
So I'm gonna go and I will also, everyone listening, make sure if you can, bring a gift. They'll be there, fill in the trunk of the police car usually.
Oh, okay, I maybe can send you something.
They are also, they also have something uh out here that you can bring the gifts to, so.
And you know that the employee's Christmas party is the twelfth. W, so the so, select room, you're all invited.
Thank you.
Good call, thank you.
We're having food, it's Italian, right? I think it is, I checked, Lu- Lu- Lynette is in charge this year, Luann does not have to do it.
Ah she's crying, look at her.
She is crying a little bit. I told her she could do two next year.
Actually, I don't like where this is going.
Let's dodge this bullet.
Someone just got a bad signature by me, it wasn't a very clear one.
I was just thinking the same thing myself.
There's nothing good about any of my signatures.
All the disclosures so that she can work. It's finally warming up in here, but it was freezing, wasn't it?
It was sixty-six degrees on the.
Calvin's working on all those policies, he's really doing a good job.
He loves it, he loves policies.
He's a very big policy and procedure guy.
It was a good fit. It was a good fit.
Everybody just man.
This one was.
We good? Alright, so. Oh, sorry. All done.
There we go.
Alright, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.